President of Highland Village City Council, today is Tuesday, May ninth, and the meeting is called to order at six o'clock sharp. So I'd like to make sure all council members are present as well as a newly elected council member who hasn't taken off yet. Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Item number one on the agenda, discuss appointing cities representative to the Eppert Trinity Regional Water District Board of Directors. Angie Miller will present.
So at the last council meeting, members from the Eppert Trinity Regional Water District was here to do an update. Richard Lunkie was here as part of that update, and he had mentioned that his term on the board of managers is expiring. So with that, he has voiced interest in serving again. There are some criteria that would have to be met. It was referenced in your agenda briefings. This is an opportunity for you to discuss an appointment for that. And if you would like to make an appointment before the session, there's an item on tonight's regular meeting agenda for that. Hi, Mr. Lunkie has served as our representative since July of nineteen ninety-four. He also served as past board president from two thousand one to two thousand three and coming out into twenty twenty-four.
Unless anybody has a more interesting candidate, I would like to keep Richard Lunkie. Good job he's doing there.
Second.
And I'd like to do it tonight if we can.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's something that even if we are going to move the motion and all that stuff, that could still be moved to consent if somebody wanted to or if they want to stay in action.
Yes, it can be moved to consent if you would like. Whenever you do your motion, you would just need to reference that he would be your appointment for the board of managers.
All right, moving on. Item number two, receive an update and discuss solid waste recycling, household hazardous waste collection services. Scott Christen will present.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Staff received direction from city council to put our solid waste and recycling services out to bid as our current contract expires September thirty this year. Staff hired solid waste specialists, and we put a, they put an RFP together, we put it out, we reviewed responses from four vendors. We reviewed responses, and we have a recommendation for council tonight on the action agenda. Do have Lynn Landtrip here with solid waste specialist, and he has a presentation even.
Who has the clicker?
Does it actually work this time?
Hope so. It works. Mayor Council, I'm Lynn Landtrip. I'm one of two principals of our consulting firm, Solid Waste Specialists, for a four-and-a-half-year-old firm. And very blessed, you're our, you're our first customer, and now you're a repeat customer for number nineteen. So we're very, very excited about what we've been blessed to serve. I have a particular relationship with the town because I'm a forty-year-retired man from waste management. And I was responsible back then, we served, for the renewals in twenty-five, I guess, years we served. And then at the end, I retired out, and the company took a different turn. And I came before this council a little bit embarrassed the last time, I'll be very frank. Because the company I've been so proud to serve had taken a very aloof stance toward Highland Village. I discovered Mike Levitt was the city manager at the time, good friend. He was kind of wavering, even though waste management had approached and said that this town will go to carts, and that's the end of the bags, or else, I'd have had to. And I was shocked. I said, "Really?" "Yeah," I was told. "Why?" So he was still wavering. He hadn't hired Richard and hired him at the time. He told me, "Come back up." So by the time of that meeting, when we came back up, they decided, for longest time, they had also picked up recycling outside of the cart without telling y'all, without telling the staff, without telling anybody. They just stopped doing it. The phones went nuts here in City Hall. Needless to say, like, beyond, we hired Richard. So we came up, and y'all were our first customer. We used the same technique that we used then. We, having done this, having been on the other side of this for most of my life, I know every trick in the book. And so we write a document, and a contract goes by that with Mr. Lawflett's oversight on contract. We write documents that are not ambiguous, so that I can always stand before a council and be proud of what has come out of the judging and the recommendation. So that's my background. Richard, Richard was the mayor of De Soto for many, many years. He's now currently the tax assessor-collector for Ellis County. So between his many years of elected service, my wife's many years of staff service for the city of Meskeaton, and me being in the garbage bin, it's, we kind of bring a unique perspective, understand how it works on all the sides here. There we go. All right. This is the service that, and by the way, when we did that last one, Waste Management did not win. CWD won. And so this was the service they were asked to provide. Ten-bag limit on garbage, once a week, recycling is in sixty. I want to tell you this, I was proud. I brought that composting system here to this town, to let go many years ago, and it's still going. And they've been doing it, done a good job with it, apparently residents like it. And then the bulky material, get it once a week. Household hazardous waste is on call, and it's unlimited. And, let's see, I think you said that this number was different than seventeen twenty-two.
No, that is correct.
That is correct, okay, that's the current.
It does not include the sales tax or franchise fees.
Got you. And the seniors do still receive, pay ten percent discount. Within that contract are all the services that are provided here. Concept is simple. No, none of this. If something happens in town, there's only one company that is responsible for the big rigs coming in here. And it works great, plus the city picks up franchise money off of this. So all the services, houses, dumpsters, construction boxes, and permanent roll-off boxes are all within that contract. There's a host of facilities that are served at no cost to the city. Mr. Stevens gave us two options to write in the RFP. One was to continue what you're doing now. And the other was to go ahead and put in the automated system, once a week, garbage in a ninety-five-gallon box. But notice that the recycling, if you remember the last slide, the recycling was in a sixty-five-gallon cart, and now it's going to be in a ninety-five-gallon cart. So you may see a little increase in the quantity. The rest of the services are the same. My apologies, I left off the household hazardous waste, that's still part of the package. We were hired, you already heard my sales pitch. So we had a RFP put together, and Richard came over and conducted the pre-bid, and it's, I hate to say this, we're kind of harsh with our pre-bid. It's not like any city pre-bid I ever did. Because we tell everyone that the documents that they're seeking have already been vetted and approved by your staff and your attorney, and that we expect to see results based on that, not based on a company's hope. And where I'm really kind of centering in is on the annual rate adjustment. It's a key component to any of these contracts, because if you don't control it, it just takes off. And so we write one that's under control using a federal register, BLS register, for only garbage and trash. Now during those pre-bids, whether it's here, anyplace we do it, we tell everybody, that is what has been approved, that method has been approved by this staff and by this attorney. And don't, don't come in here with a rate that you're finger-crossing, that you're going to get away with a different method, and lowball the price, and then rocket through the next four years. So everybody was told that, and everybody pretty much applied. We answered the questions, proposal was received from the four companies that attended, except Waste Connections did not respond. This was agreed upon, this was the measuring matrix. And when the judging was done by three city staff and Richard and I, and this is what we focused. As you can see, the price at the bottom is only thirty-five percent of the proposal. That narrative and telling your story, proving your story. I'll point at this, this is, we're the only company that does this. We force out the safety scores that federally, they have to report this every month. Never seen a consultant ask, and I'm proud to do this. We don't want somebody, I don't care what the pricing, we don't want somebody running around your streets that really does not focus on safety with their employees. So this score tells all, tells the table. Everybody came in pretty good here. The one we're going to recommend came in with an unbelievably good score. Then the review, I just told you, had three folks from the city, Richard and I. We scored it, we're looking for who we're going to interview. You had four participants, who we're going to interview. So we're looking for the best overall value. Now, we don't stand before you and try to focus just on the house price, because there's a lot more to Highland Village than the house. There's a lot of commercial work here. So the pricing and everything, that is, it's the whole enchilada is what you're looking at. So after the judges went through pretty exhaustive, these books that come in, they're a hundred pages plus. After going through that written evaluation, three companies were chosen for the next stage, which was a very intensive interview. CWD, your incumbent, Republic, and Frontier. Frontier's a regional firm, it's like CWD. The three, the three that came in, these were the written scores, they were relatively close, forty points for Republic, fifty-five and forty-four for CWD. So that qualified to get them in, get them in here for the interview. So now we're looking at the financials. Result of the combined activity is Republic was the lowest on option one. Remember, option one was continuing what you do with just bag collection, a cart for recycling, and that was, they were the low combined number there. Now, it was an odd thing. The rate for the house that Republic turned in was the same. This is very interesting, and that's why we're going to recommend. It's the same price, whether it was option two or option one. I'd never seen that before, so it piqued everybody's interest. There is an asterisk, and you'll notice that this number is higher than that number. Well, there's a reason. When we do the pre-bid, I tell everybody that's in there that we're not going to bring anything to this council that has not been extended by either my best guess from my experience, and I got a lot of that, or we have known numbers. Everything gets extended. There's no just a number thrown in here, because you guys got a lot on your plate. The last thing you have to do is try to figure out a price in a garbage contract. So when we extend, how many people are going to have a second cart in Highland Village? You will have about five percent of your population normally, I call it the football crowd. They got the big boys that are playing, they can't get by with one cart. When they graduate, they can, they go back to it. For that period of time, they're going to have two carts at their house, and everybody submitted a price, a very fair price for a second cart. So that's why that number differs from the other, even though the price was the same. It's very interesting. Any questions on that? Does that make sense so far? In the interview is when everything kind of came out, it was pretty neat. Obviously, the question was, how and why do you guys have the same, same price here? Well, I have to tell you, I haven't seen this before. It is very well thought out. They are obviously aggressively seeking this city. Their proposal is going to provide for a ninety-five-gallon cart for every resident for once a week garbage. There are going to be, and historically, the council, the reason that, five years ago, the reason that council then stumbled on going into carts at the time is because in their wisdom at the time, they said, "Well, we've got a lot of people," I hate to say it, probably my age, that are recalcitrant, they want to stay with the bags. And so it was just the easiest political decision just to do it. What they are going to let the people do here is for the price. If the people just do this, and they don't, they're not going to use that cart, they're going to bring those bags out there, they're going to pick them up. They're going to pick up the carts, and they'll pick up those naysayers. Now, I will tell you this, over time, the naysayers will give in. That's just what's going to happen. People will see the neighbor is going out one time with a cart, and they're going bag after bag after bag to the curb. The common sense is going, you know, they're going to switch the cart. But there's no hitch in this thing. For that price, they're going to give both kinds of service. It's a political win-win. You can't have anybody hollering at you because you're serving them no matter which side of the fence they're standing. Now, the neat thing about an automated system, the swing arm system, is wherever the cart is, when it's collected, is where the cart go when it's sent back down. If you do it the way it's done now, there's nothing wrong with doing it the way it is, but there's a feller or lady on the back of the truck, and they're responsible to get the cart, get it over, put it on the tipper, flip it, and then they're responsible to put it back where it was. Now, in a human situation, so you have a lot of problems with the cart not ending up where it started. It could be out in the street, just all kinds of things can happen. But when you're using this kind of system, it's come down, grab the cart, up and over, lay it back down, so exactly where it picked up, that's where it comes back. So that's a pretty good thing. So they went to the top of the list with this very well thought out, it's an aggressive program. If I was still in the business, I probably would, I don't know how you guys did it. I don't think my bosses would have let me do this. This is very well thought through. Now, Ken provided this for you. This shows, since you have franchise and sales tax, this is what's actually going to be billed to the resident. Twenty dollars and forty-four cents regular, eighteen forty-three per senior. Current price, it's basically the same price. We're going to recommend that you.
I'm sorry?
Looks about thirty cents different.
Once you get in the twenty-dollar range, it's massa means. So our recommendation to y'all is that you take there, Republic Waste, option two. Let them put in that system. Everybody gets a cart. Guess we'll have to work through, if you have just real, real recalcitrant people that won't take the cart. But we always work, that's not a problem. And they're going to offer both collection systems. Recycling's going up to a ninety-five. Compost still goes on Monday, still goes to let go. Large press and bulky weekly, increasing to three cubic yards are basically back of a pickup truck, is about three cubic yards. And once again, the, now, you know, the old landfill I use, DFW, is closed now. So the one that they will use is Camelot, which is kind of across the street from the old DFW site. And so the residents can still take material there themselves, and it continues the provision of household hazardous waste at the curb on call.
I've got a question for you. When you talk about carts, so I get a recyclable recycle cart and a normal garbage cart. So I don't have to go out and buy my garbage cart?
No, no.
Okay. So all those.
And they're responsible for the maintenance of that.
Okay.
Right? Now, if you throw hot ashes into you.
Right, I got you.
But as far as the lids and the wheels and that, that's about all they're bringing. They're on the hook.
I like that idea, because in my neighborhood, there's a bunch of nasty garbage cans out. The only ones that have any uniformity or conformity are the recycle carts. And some of those recycle carts are old, old, old recycle carts from Waste Management that didn't get changed out. So I like them.
So that is my recommendation, and I'll answer any questions you have.
Is there a service to clean the carts?
They don't provide, there is a company that does have.
Oh, yeah? But it's not part of the service here or an additional service?
No, because it's not really cheap, I'll be honest with you. I look at it, it's kind of costly.
It's cleaning inside of the carts.
What about picking up old carts? Because I do have two of those old stinky carts.
What do we do with those carts?
We hadn't really kind of worked that through. We would have to work that out with a vendor and see if they offer some service. It's not in this price, but, because it's not their car.
Then if we had.
What if they're personal carts? Can we indicate that they are trash and have those taken away when we get the new carts?
I guess I'll have to. I'm getting some head nods back here from the public. Are you willing to work with them a little bit?
Is this designated trash? No, John, it's a normal trash can cart. So if we own three or four trash can carts that aren't C and W, CW carts, then he's asking if we can do this.
So can we amplify what you said?
Yes, if it was clearly marked trash and to remove, then we would instruct our, for people to basically compact it with trash.
Hopefully that answers.
And what about the old recycled, recycled carts that we have?
They're owned by the current vendors, I'm sure they would, the city owns them.
City owns them.
The city does, I'm sorry, Scott.
That CWD carts, I would imagine you'll come pick them up. The sixty-five-gallon blue Waste Management carts, the city owns those, so we'll have to.
Okay. All right, perfect, all right.
Can you go through a little bit more of the arm system, how it works? We've got, all throughout the village, we have multiple situations in varying sizes of streets. Traffic, except.
And cars in the streets.
Cars in the streets, circles, the.
People that leave them the wrong direction, the lifter will look on them anyway, because they're backwards.
I would like, if possible, to defer to the vendor on that, because my knowledge, my answer would be the way we did it at Waste Management. I don't know exactly what their response would be to your question in Republic. I'd love to see a video of it.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Craig Miccolati, general manager with Republic. But, so we've converted in this system multiple, multiple cities. Most recently, Aubrey, we saw the conversion there. But obviously, we deal with the cul-de-sacs, the cars. There'll be literature attached to the carts when they're put out, on spacing between carts, between overhead hangs, cars in the street. Basically, you need three feet around the cart to ensure that we're able to get to it. Up front, with our bulk truck, we will kind of educate the residents. We move them, we're doing this in Lewisville right now as well, so you can also speak to them. Guys on the back will space the carts, remove them as they roll, as they go through, when there's alleyways. But kind of educate the residents on, hey, I know you had it over here, kind of, we need it over here.
So because of the limitations of the vehicle?
Well, no, I'm coming out.
Correct.
And we don't want to get a car or mailbox, gas meter, a lot of people put them in front of the gas meter, and then we grab the gas meter and the cart. There's a learning curve on, on the resident's side.
It'll be a public education campaign.
Correct.
If I remember correctly from our interview, the ASL truck has a twelve-foot reach.
So they can get it from a good distance.
Right. If there's a car parked and the carts in front of the car or in between, good-sized distance, they could reach twelve feet.
Streets over in Briar Hill were a little bit more narrow, I can see how that works, they're generally straight. And one of the concerns I have, though, is, on the street I'm at, is it's a circle, it's a cul-de-sac, and it's fairly narrow. And the current provider, when they come, they don't even go around there anymore, because they're always driving over the grass in the circle. They stopped doing that, they back out now, because it's so narrow, they can't get in there. So they have to walk and get the trash, dump it, bring the trash can back. And generally, it's not putting it back, it's usually, it's got rollers, it'll go on its own, you know. You get a lot of results of stuff that's left in the trash can, didn't get dumped, it's flying everywhere, which is another question for them. How, when the, when the system comes back, does the lid actually close? Does somebody make sure it's closed? A lot of times, there's trash that's left in those, that don't always get dumped. There's concerns like that. Now, I think that's where we got most of our complaints from the current provider, or to the current providers. Trash left on the street, trash cans falling over, being dumped somewhere, and things like that. So that's really where I'm coming from on this.
And, I mean, I live in Lantana, and we just converted this as well. And it is a learning experience on both parts, but typically, the lid comes back down and closes.
How long you guys been in business?
Here?
Yeah. There's a reason for my question. How long have you been, how long has Republic been in business? Just give me a, give me a number.
Over, over forty years.
Okay, and how long have you been employing this type of system?
Probably close to ten.
Ten? And have you ever hit a car, or you have hit a car?
I mean, with an arm going out.
Right. And then if you hit a car, it's your fault, you take care of the car. Okay, what percentage of times in your deliveries do you hit cars?
Probably less.
Okay, that's all I got to say.
I just, are the arms, I mean, is there an operator sitting in the truck?
Yes.
Guiding that arm?
He has a joystick with a monitor. Obviously, he's playing a video game all day.
I was just curious, you know, to Brian's point, I drove up hillside the other day, and there were garbage cans sitting on the grass, there were garbage cans sitting on the street, there were garbage cans sitting on the sidewalks. There were cars everywhere, okay? Because they park them in the driveway, they park them on the street. I mean, it's going to be a big education process, and that's just one street. You get over here into Scenic, okay, in the Clearwater area, it's going to be dodgeballs.
But it's part of the education process, and that's, we're all smart people. We read, we understand, we comprehend. These guys have been doing it for ten years, they've had one percent where they've hit cars. I don't see it being an issue. Scott, do you see it being an issue?
Yes.
I just, I just want to learn. I had a question that I sent Paul earlier today. Who was our contractor before, is he the place manager? Waste Management, okay. That's what I, that's what I opened with councilman.
So to your, to your email, the reason why we switched, it was, I think it was two reasons. One was, we didn't know it at the time, but they were getting out of the municipal business altogether, and then the, and as a result, the bid that they submitted was just so far out of, out of everybody else's.
Well, I mean, the reason I ask is, I mean, I wasn't on council then, and I wanted to make certain we weren't going to someone who we left for certain reasons. And so, you know, that's, that's why I wanted to make certain, because, you know, my opinion, I love the analysis. I'm one of those old school, the W, okay? You know, for pennies, it's hard to make a change, but I'm not willing to stand in front of it, because I like what I see. And if mechanical works, there's a lot to like.
What is your?
I was going to ask you, and in addition to that, remember that they're also saying that they have to use bags, they're going to use the bags they're going to collect. I think if someone's using bags, then that's probably recycling, not recycling, but press tape.
Good question, are the trucks manned to have somebody actually dump the cart if, on. Are the trucks manned to have somebody actually dump the cart if the armed can get to it? Or is it just a single person in the car?
They're a single person, they will typically get out and move the cart wherever they have to.
Okay, so that, that was my question.
Sorry.
And that was the, no, that's okay. Because my question was if you're doing a single man team or a single person truck, and a lot of folks still use bags, I mean, how much is that going to hamper your system? That means a guy is going to go up a yard, jump out, throw everything in. Whereas the current system, there's more than one guy on the truck.
And, and let me explain the, kind of the way we will run it. So, the automated truck, that's a one-man truck, will pick up all of your carts. You will not be picking up your bags.
Ah.
This traditional system like yours now, they will be picking up the bags outside the carts.
It'll be followed by a rearload truck, meaning by two guys?
Yes.
Okay, with that in mind, then, if you can't educate the public in a short period of time, running two trucks seems to be a, a, an expense that you don't want to take on. In time, they're going to have to increase the rate to cover that additional expense if the population doesn't adopt carts.
But they're restricted to the annual rate increases they sign on.
And that restriction-
They can't approach you to ask for additional funds consequently.
Is that for, what, a twelve-month period or twenty-four?
Every twelve months.
Every twelve months, so they can come back the next year and add, based on the history of cap of the program?
It's cap.
No, it's based on, it's based on a cap that's provided by the Federal Department, their labor statistics.
Similar, similar what we're doing now, we've got a, we've got a formula cap for rights, so it won't go above X amount set, set by the contract.
So, they can't come back in and just willy-nilly say, we're going to increase you two more bucks?
Right.
So, what, what does it work out in the dollars sense? I mean, if we, we make a change-
That's the slide is the first year of savings. The holistic, the holistic approach, Councilman, was, uh, we had that one slide that was focusing on the house. I kind of hated to do that because the opportunity was based on the hol- the holistic piece. In other words, all your businesses, and the gap there was between one sixty-eight and one eighty-six a month. Hundred and sixty-eight thousand versus one hundred and eighty-six thousand. That's the focus point. That takes in all your dumpsters, that takes in all your roll-offs and the houses.
So, ten thousand a month roughly, so a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year is what we're projecting savings overall.
Actually, it's-
No, it's more than that, one eighty-six now to one sixty-eight.
Oh, one eighty-six, okay.
Yeah, it's twenty.
That's what my memory tells me.
It's a lot.
Eighteen thousand.
Two hundred and sixteen.
Two hundred and sixteen thousand.
That pays a little bit more to the police department.
And cushions at, and cushions at DCTA?
It's bound for the work of the fire department.
Hey, listen, Mike, did you hear my comment? That two hundred and sixteen thousand cushions, a little bit that fee that we paid at DCTA.
Any more questions for me? Yes, sir.
Is there any savings to be had if we just go under percent automated carts? If we eliminate that second truck picking up, uh, the occasional bag? Because they still got to go up and down every street in town, right?
That's something we would have to talk during contract negotiation.
I mean-
Yes, they, they gave the same price for both services.
Okay.
Yep.
So, my question would be-
It doesn't change anything.
Answer is no.
Sure, no.
Okay, but that would be for the first twelve months. If, if the public is, is adopting, after that, then we have, we can negotiate a little price to get rid of the second truck. I don't think they agree on a cost per-
No, they wouldn't do that because they're already pricing, yeah. They're betting on the come that over, I'm speaking for you, but they're betting on the come that over time, every resident is going to say, why am I still lifting cop a bags to the curb? When my neighbor just does this and takes the cart to the curb? Basically, that's going to win out, it always does.
Yeah.
Quite frankly, it always wins out in Texas.
One more question for Republic. Refresh my memory, did you service Flower Mound, uh, two thousand seven, six timeframe? Because we had automated service in Flower Mound at that time, and it was great, no problems at all.
So, yes. Then you- Yes, it wasn't. Yes, so, um, we, um, it went out to bid, um, not long after that, and Waste Management had it for five years. And then, um, due to some issues, they went back out for RFP and we have it again. And so, they, yes, so actually, um, Flower Mound, Plano, there were several, um, that came out of our Plano facility before we opened our Justin facility. We've been doing automated side load for much longer than ten years. You never want to correct your boss in a meeting. It goes, I mean, Plano was automated side load on everything that they did. And then, um, we made a decision to open a facility in Justin, and a lot of the automated went there. So, yes, we've been automated side load probably since about two thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Which landfills do you use?
Additional question.
Which landfills? Do you guys use Lewisville or do you have your own landfills?
Um, we do Lewisville as well. And we own C and, C, a C and D site, and then we manage the landfill, Camelot landfill, which is owned by the City of Farmers branch that's located in the city of Lewisville. But we manage it life of sight.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it's a very long contract, I'm very familiar with it because I'm the one that dad deals with that one.
Yeah, so, yeah, it was a, yeah, it's a-
So, our stuff will be trucked to Camelot?
Yes. Yes.
Are all the trucks C and G or the, uh, combination?
They're diesel.
Can you give us an idea what happens on days when trash does come out of the bins and is left on the streets? How's that handled by, or how often does it actually happen?
Like, falling, like, cart falls over or?
That, or windy days blows out of the cart.
I, I will say this, with those sized carts, your, your chances of that thing falling over, if it's full, are a lot better. But typically, they'll, they're going to get out, kick it off in order to dump it laying over.
Well, I'm more, I'm more concerned about trash blowing out of or falling out on the side, not that cans typically are falling over. As it's being lifted and dumped.
Okay, we're going to let our operations charge or division-
We service, uh, a million and a half services a month. Very, very, very few calls for scatter. If I do have it, it's generally from a rearload truck. Uh, as we're manually emptying those into the rearload on a gusty day, that can be an issue. The design of the ASL pretty much prevents scatter from, it, it's going directly down into, it has a little bit of a coverage area there. We don't get much scattered at all really from the side load.
Okay, thank you.
So, I actually do live in, in Flower Mound, and I, I will just say, I was, I was one of the residents that got chosen to do a survey, um, before they went out for RFP last time. And one of the things they wanted to know from the residents, did they want to go back to bagged, um, trash, or if they wanted to keep carts? And I don't think I've ever seen that many residents show up at a council meeting to say, we want to keep our carts because they don't blow over. And you can fill those carts, um, I mean, I think that the capacity weight on it is like two hundred and eighty-five pounds or something. And so, um, and we've been in carts for a really, really long time. And when I lived in Highland Village, I was very shocked that Highland Village didn't have carts actually, uh, because I had to furnish my own. But, um, the residents were asked in Flower Mound, um, it's been about six years, seven years ago, uh, if they wanted to go back to their own containers, and it was absolutely not. So, um, there's always an education process, um, but we have made a commitment to, um, staff, uh, that we would work very diligently on all of the correspondence that goes out to the residents to start training them. And, and train all of our people to be sure that we uphold the standards that the city is expecting from us. Cart placement, there, there are a few instances in every city that they can't put it at the end of their driveway, or they can't put it in their grass. And we always send the operations team out and we're able to work through those things. So, um, there's not a, um, an answer for every address, an answer that covers every address. But we know what needs to happen to be able to give the customer priority.
So, I think another good thing about this too, and I believe it was brought up by a resident when we were having the discussion about the RFP, was, you know, the thought was then, if you do the automatic cart lift, everything in the cart, that's it. But with this system, if, say, you've got two bags that don't fit in your cart, you put those two bags there, your cart gets picked up, the other truck comes by, picks up those other two bags, so, uh-
What about boxes?
It's always the best of both worlds.
What about boxes? Like you have a TV box or something like that.
We treat anything outside the, the, the cart as trash, and that rearload that comes by is going to collect that.
Okay. Break that down to recycle.
Yeah, so, that goes with recycling too. Sometimes, you know, around Christmas or whatever, you got more boxes that'll fit in your blue cart or green or whatever color it is. Do you guys pick up cardboard next to the recycle box, or does that all just go in the garbage?
In general, we ask if you're going to recycle it to place it inside the recycle cart. If you place it outside the cart, we're going to treat it as trash.
Okay.
You'll be getting a larger recycling. And a recycle pickup, same time, morning and afternoon on whatever your day is.
Same day.
Okay. Anything else? All right, thank you.
We were going to show you a video, but unfortunately, it's having a hard time loading.
Thank you for asking security.
Go on, Mike.
I can, I can send you all the link, Eric, if you like. It's a Republic video of that.
Discussion IT.
It's fun for kids to get them out there and watch.
All right, so item number three is clarification of consent interaction items listed on today's city council meeting agenda. Anyone have any questions or need clarification on any of the items? All right, well, if that's the case, then we can close out early work session.
So, on my presentation, just a, a question, on my presentation as a gold watch or is it a?
I have no idea, I haven't been told yet. I do know the time will be a part of your presentation, so just leave it at that.
All right, so we move item number sixteen to consent during the meeting.
Uh, that's the one I'm moving on about, uh-
Yeah, when, yeah, when, all right, when called for consent agenda, you can ask that the consent agenda include item sixteen prior to making the motion.
But you also have to include the fact that we're going to dominate.
And then the motion would include?
Okay, yeah. All right, if there's nothing else, we'll close out early work session since forty-one.
Good evening. Welcome to, uh, let me get to the right page. Good evening. Welcome to the regular session of Highland Village City Council. Today is Tuesday, May the 9th, and the meeting is called to order at 7:00 PM sharp. Let the record show that all council members are present. Please join me in the prayer and the pledge. I get to do the prayer tonight, so please bow your heads with me. Heavenly Father, first and foremost, we ask that you wrap the families of those injured and lost in last Saturday's tragedy in Allen in your loving arms. Bring them peace and comfort in what is the most difficult of times. And we ask that our society learn from this incident, learn that we can be better if we follow the path that you have set for us. Lord, we also ask that you bless our dear friends, Mike and Tom, as they complete their service to our city. These are both good and honorable men, so we pray that they can leave tonight's meeting with a deep sense of satisfaction and peace over the great accomplishments we have achieved during their time of service. May they each enjoy the time with their families and enjoy success at whatever mission you next choose for each of them. We also give thanks for the opportunity to exercise our freedom through an election last week, and that our two newest members, Kevin and Rhonda, will always remember to serve you first, enjoying both the blessing and privilege that comes with serving such a wonderful community. Finally, we pray for your continued blessings on our community and those serving at all levels. We pray for the safety and security of those wearing our country's uniform, as well as those serving our residents in our police, fire, dispatch, and city services. We pray that all will enjoy safe days at work and that they are all able to return safely to their families each night. In all this, we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item number eight, mayor and council reports. Now, mayor and council reports on items of community interest pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.0415. The city council may report on the following items: expression of holiday schedules, thanks, congratulations, and condolences, recognition of individuals, reminders about upcoming city council events, information about community events, and announcements involving imminent threat to public health and safety. Does anybody have anything they want to report? I got a couple, I got a couple of things real quick. First, I want to, I want to give a special thank you to the Parks and Recreation staff. There was a softball tournament held at Unity Park this weekend, and as I think we all remember, Saturday night was a stormy night. There were members of staff that were up at, up at the park, I think at 5:00 AM on Sunday morning to make sure the fields were playable, so that the tournament could be wrapped up on Sunday. They did an absolutely phenomenal job, so I just want to give a good shout out to our Parks and Recreation staff. Second, I spent last week making stops at all of our different schools in Highland Village, giving out proclamations to teachers that were Campus Teachers of the Year, Staff Members of the Year, as well as some LISD of the Year awardees. Lot of fun. I posted pictures on my Facebook page. We did, we've got some great teachers and staff members doing some great things in our schools. So it was, that was a lot of fun, and I appreciate the schools welcoming me in to allow me to do that. And then finally, just, we're going to have a good presentation here in a minute to recognize the Marcus girls soccer team for their state championship. So that's all I had. Mr. Stevens, did you have anything?
Uh, no, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Last call for anybody else? Sir?
Hope to see all the stakeholders next this Saturday.
Yes.
Seventh event. Thanks for all the support.
Looking forward to it. Looking forward to it. All right, so next we'll move on to presentations and proclamations. So I'm going to come down to the, to the podium. Will the girls soccer team meet me there? Coach? How are you? Coach deserves a great hand too. She, she led this team throughout the regular season on an interim label. The school didn't give her a permanent contract until they won the state championship. I hope you got a bonus out of that. So I'm going to give you the official copy, and I've got one with big print. Here you go.
Thank you.
Ladies? Yeah, y'all want to come up here? That way get, get all your pretty faces in the picture?
Yeah.
Y'all will make me, y'all will make me look good. So bear with me, there's some whereas's here. This is what these proclamations go like.
It's my last council meeting.
Whereas the Marcus Marauders girls soccer team has completed their 2023 season, and whereas the Marcus Marauders girls soccer team defeated the Fort Ben Ridge Point team in the Class 6A UIL Girls Soccer State Championship game with a two to nothing win, and whereas the team finished their season with a 26-1-1 record, and whereas the Marcus Marauders girls soccer team is representative of their commitment to sportsmanship, excellence, and personal development, and have worked hard for this victory, and whereas on behalf of the city, of the city council of the city of Highland Village, I would like to congratulate Coach Herbert and the Marcus Marauders girls soccer team on their exceptional talent in bringing home the win. Their success has generated positive attention, excitement, and community pride while serving as an example and inspiration to the community. Now therefore, I, Daniel Jaworski, mayor of the city of Highland Village, do hereby proclaim May 9th, 2023, as Marcus Marauders Girls Soccer State Champions Day in the city of Highland Village. Are you sure? You speak to these girls all the time? Come on.
I know. Well, thank you for, you know, our community was such a huge help in supporting us along the way, and it was really special. We were so glad to have you at the community pep rally. We did a drive-through to all of the Marcus High School feeder schools. And so Mayor Jaworski was there at McAuliffe.
I got to high five all of you. That was so cool.
It was so great to have him there, and it just shows what, truly what a great community we live in, and we're so blessed to be part of Highland Village and Farm Town and LISD as a whole. And, and thank you so much for the support. These girls worked so hard all season long and, and really deserve every bit of this recognition and attention.
And this is your second in school history, correct? Second state title?
It's the first 6A state championship Marcus has ever won.
That's right. And so you're now getting ready for, can I say the word? The repeat? Repeat? Yeah, the, the, yeah. Congratulations, and it was so, it was so fun sending y'all off.
Thank you so much.
Let me, why don't you come up here? I'll get behind you.
Everybody move this way so we don't have the podium. Everybody move so that the podium is the end here. Everybody move so that the podium is the end here.
See, that's, that's what I'm wondering, if bonds mature and they cut the money out.
Y'all do get rings, right?
Vice versa, I don't know.
Do you know what they're going to look like?
That's what I was thinking.
Oh, I want to see a picture.
Or we ordered a bond and it all went in the thing, but, and that's money that's...
I mean, you know, what do you have to lose? What are they going to do, kick me out?
That's wrong.
Mayor, maybe if you were running there, right there. Right there. I don't know. You took a change.
Congratulations, congratulations.
And thank y'all for coming and letting us, letting us heap some praise on you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, y'all don't have to hang around if you don't want to.
They're going to be, just, they're not going to have any input.
They can sign, they can get the, yeah.
Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Congratulations again.
Thank y'all, congratulations.
Chief? You're up.
This is all of us coming in, sorry.
Oh, hey. That's a hard group to follow. We'll let them get down the hall a little further.
I suggested they have to sit around and wait for us.
I thought so, too. They could have gotten their civics credit that way. Okay, so, whereas, there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Highland Village Police Department, and whereas, since the first recorded death in 1786, almost 23,785 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, and whereas, the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC, and whereas, 556 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 224 officers killed in 2022 and 332 officers killed in the previous years, and whereas, the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 35th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2023, and whereas, the Candlelight Vigil is part of the National Police Week, which will be observed this year from May 14th to May 20th, 2023. In addition, Monday, May 15th, 2023, is the Designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and the US flag should be flown at half-staff. Now therefore, I, Daniel Jaworski, Mayor of the City of Highland Village, do hereby proclaim May 14th through the 20th, 2023, in Highland Village as National Police Week, and publicly salute the law, the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Chief, did you want to say anything?
I could what the girls say. Thank, uh, can you be the speaker for this or not? Or loud enough?
If you stand there next to the chief.
Good. I just want to say thank you for the community, for all the support, being part of this community, making it safe, helping it partner with you to do it, but really, it's these folks next to me and the ones out in the streets right now. I have the funnest job in the world. People ask me if I like my job, I say, no, I love my job. And they say, no, you're just saying that, chief. I say, no, I'm not, because really, in this world, for us to do what we have to do, we have to love our job. And these guys love their jobs, and they love you, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Chief? Thanks, sir.
It's not like looking at Medusa.
All right. Thank you.
All right, next. I had to bring my agenda so I can stay on track.
I have...
Yep. So next, we're going to do a presentation for our two outgoing council members. This is their, their last council, well, their last regular council meetings.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we want them to come down here? Yes, so Tom, Mike? Oh, you want to do separately? We can do that, too. Okay, y'all, who wants to go first? Want to flip a coin? All right, pick a number between 1 and 5.
I'll come down, I'm first on the agenda.
Let the two in your wing go first, or not?
Okay. So this is, this is for you. I haven't looked at it yet, so I have no idea. It'll be a surprise for both of us.
Can I open it now?
Yeah, go ahead. Turned out great.
That's great.
So Mr. Mike Lombardo began serving the Highland Village community when he was appointed to Planning and Zoning Commission in 2012, over a decade ago. He was then appointed, appointed to Highland Village City Council to fill an unexpired vacancy for place three in 2014, and he was then elected in 2015 to place three, where he has served his four full terms. Mr. Lombardo has also served as Mayor Pro Tem since 2019, and I just want to say, Mike has been a friend of mine since before, I think either one of us were ever on council. Our kids have practically grown up together.
Yes.
So he and Marcy have been very good friends of ours for a long time, and then serving on council with you for the last seven years has been an absolute privilege and an honor. Having you as Mayor Pro Tem for the last year has been a valuable resource, and just your friendship and your service and your experience, I can't say enough, and we're going to miss you over the next year, but I got a feeling we'll probably hear from you from time to time.
Ooh.
But I know you're going to enjoy your time with Marcy. Y'all are about 10 minutes away from being empty nesters completely, so.
Close.
So good luck and enjoy, and maybe we'll see you back someday.
Maybe.
And then, I just want to close, there's a little bit of historical trivia that I need to share with Mike. As many of you know, our last council meeting was very quick. There was a record at stake in that last council meeting. Back in September 10th of 2019, Mr. Lombardo oversaw a council meeting because Mayor Wilcox at the time was on vacation, so he was the mayor that day, and his meeting lasted from 7:30 to 7:47, a total of 17 minutes. So I've been waiting for my opportunity to beat that record, because I'm, I'm kind of competitive. So our last meeting, we had Angie, she dug vigorously to compare these two to find which, which meetings it was. She did a lot of work. 7:01 to 7:16, I beat him by two minutes, the now, I now hold the record, so get out of the way.
Now, first of all, I knew I should have filibustered a little bit more, longer than I did, so that's my fault, but congratulations on that, Dan. Thank you very much.
Love you, brother.
Thank you. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve the city, and I really enjoy it, and I really enjoy working with these gentlemen and the council members of the past, the city staff, police department, fire department, parks. We have the greatest city in the world, and I love it.
So looking back over all these years of service, what's the, probably the, the, the most significant vote you've ever had to cast?
I don't know. That's a good one.
But you're on the spot.
Yeah, yeah, um, you know, there was a lot of stuff as far as budgeting that was contentious sometimes, there was, uh, obviously, our, our community, our, our future plan was, was an issue, and some of the apartment votes that we just went through. So those were, then I remember the fun ones as well.
That was my next question.
Yeah. You know, no, 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 not that. I enjoy, and it, it was great, and it was very rewarding, was Doubletree Ranch Park, and it probably goes as my most important vote as well. It, you know, I was there from the very beginning, and I saw it through to the very end. It was just a farm or an old homestead that was kind of just there, and now it's a great park, and...
What's, what's been your most favorite event? You're the, the event you had the most fun at?
Huh.
Hawk Fest?
No, that would be, that would go for one of the worst. There were, there were some, a few events, there, there was the, the police events that go on over at the shops over the last few years. Christmas in, in the park at Doubletree Ranch is always fun, and of course, Celebrate Highland Village is my favorite with the fireworks show, the concert. I'm just bummed out that I'm not going to have that premium parking anymore, so if the mayor can help me out for this summer, that would be great, but no. Celebrate Highland Village is awesome, I love it.
Well, thank you. Thank you again for everything.
Thank you.
Enjoy yourself.
Appreciate it.
Makes me look taller.
No, no side makes you look taller, sorry.
Soapbox.
Hair.
Hey, Tom, do you want to stand up my award? Maybe that'll...
Yeah, I'll come up here. How about this?
There you go.
I'll come down here. Ooh, it's noisy. Oh, wow. That's great.
It's pretty.
Mm-hmm.
So prior to being elected to Highland Village City Council, Mr. Heslop served on the Planning and Zoning Commission for almost three years. I think we served together for a year or so.
We did.
In May 2019, he was elected to Highland Village City Council, place five, where he served two full terms, and then made the deci, the tough decision this spring not to seek his third term. But I will say, like I said to Mike, I mean, your friendship, your, your advice, your counsel, since I've been on council, since we've served together, we sat together on, on the dais for...
You had to help me find my switch.
Yeah, yeah.
We'd sit up there every week, and I'd try to make...
He'd want to talk and couldn't find his button to turn the light on. But, but no, I've, I've really, I really enjoyed sitting next to you all the time. I've missed sitting, sitting next to you, and, and your counsel, your support, and everything. Your friendship means the world to me, and so I wish you and Kelly nothing but the best in whatever you decide to do.
Thank you.
And, uh, just love you, just love you.
Well, just a couple words, hey, thank you, City of Highland Village, for allowing me to serve. Thank you for being able to let me serve, give back, and put service before self. That's the Rotary motto. It's all we do in this world, and that's what we should do, is put other people before us. Staff, or Paul, Kevin, Chief, Angie, I can't say enough about you. Ken, thank you for the education. Scott, you're the man. Guys, I've really enjoyed serving with you. It's been an honor, it really has. I've learned a lot from each one of you. We've been good friends, we've had some great road trips, and I really appreciate it. I know you guys are going to miss me, though, because you're not going to get my little lumberjack musings, okay? So I'm going to say to the lumberjacks out there, my special one is not here tonight, but I want to let her know, because she's out of town, she couldn't be here tonight. But baby, I love you with all my heart and all my soul. Don't forget it. Act some jacks.
Hey, Tom, don't go anywhere.
Oh, yes, ma'am. I want to go up here. There we go. Come on, I'm serious.
Only time in his life he's going to look like Hakeem Olajuwon.
All right, boys.
Need help down?
Oh, come on. Don't take that, that's my...
I'm not. Just make sure before you leave tonight, you clean your trash up.
I will. I normally leave it kind of trashy.
All right. Moving, moving on to item number nine, city manager and staff reports. Mr. Stevens, did you have anything you wanted to report?
Mayor, I do want to mention this Friday is movies in the park. It will start at dusk in its Hotel Transylvania, so I hope everybody can come out for that. Question may come up about Highland Village Road access to I-35. Scott did talk to the contractor today, waiting for the approval of the striping plan, as well as the bridge height sign. Still don't have an ETA, but those are the two items we're waiting for to get that fully open. So hopefully that will, will happen soon.
All right. And then item number 10, visitors' comments, anyone wishing to address, I'm sorry?
We have village reports also.
Oh, we do? Oh, okay. Village reports, so we get to watch something.
Highland Village has so much to offer, from great businesses, to parks and recreation, to wellness and fine dining. I'm Taylor, and I'm inviting you to experience Highland Village. I'm with Jen, one of the owners of Sip and Savor. Welcome, Jen.
Hi.
I love this place, Jen. Everything about it is phenomenal. When you were thinking about creating a restaurant in the Dallas-Fort Worth area, what was missing that caused you to want to inspire Sip and Savor?
First thing we thought of is a feminine, very warm, cozy feel, and so that is why there is wallpaper, there is the differentiation in fabric material, from leather to a very soft velvet material, and then obviously our marble tops and our wood tops.
In particular, we are here in your event space. You've got a screen, it's soundproof, it's just the ambiance here is incredible. There's several ways that you're creating community here at Sip and Savor.
Yeah, so we just started just last month, Cuvee Community, which is a monthly membership, where I get the opportunity to share some really great, unique wines and even wine growers across all countries. It's typically three reds, three whites, but we'll change it up from time to time. What I've been doing for so long in the wine industry, I want to now share that with the community, one wine at a time.
I'm here with Scott Scherer, the other half of Sip and Savor. Welcome, Scott.
Thank you for having us.
What was it about Highland Village that made it attractive for you to create such an incredible restaurant here?
Our, our first vision was to create deep roots in a community and create community, and so as we started looking for the best location, we obviously looked close to our home, and then the second piece is that it's also growing. There's a ton of growth around here, so you have this great, great start, and then you have the ability to grow over time.
Well, that translates into the food, Scott, which is delicious. No secret, I've been here dozens and dozens of times.
We have your name etched on one of the tables, right?
Yes, probably so. I love eating here. All the things that you bring from the food side, and Jen with her more than 15 years of experience on the wine side, tell us about that, and how the food came together.
Americana food is, is, it's a really broad category. I think the best example of what we're trying to achieve with that is recognizable food that, that's elevated up, with the focus being Northern California influences, and a lot of that influence from Asian cultures influences a lot of what you see in Napa and Sonoma in a lot of restaurants, and so you'll see dishes that have gua shu jang, which is a Korean spice, or tokorashi, which is a Japanese spice, on top of traditional American dishes. Yeah, that's what we're trying to achieve.
Speaking of food, looks like it's coming.
All right. We have our tokorashi tuna, Highland Village hippie, bone fruit salad, you all enjoy.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
And here come the cocktails.
All right, here we go.
We have the tropez tart.
Ah, it's so beautiful.
And watermelon cooler, Jen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And here's Jen. Come on in, Jen.
A glass of Portuguese rosé and a Willamette Pinot Noir.
Well, look at all this wonderful food and delicious drinks. This is your invitation to come and experience Sip and Savor. I'm Taylor with Experiencing Highland Village, and we'll see you next time.
My name is Corporal McLaughlin. I've been working with Highland Village Police Department for a little over three years. Being a police officer was a childhood dream, like many of us in law enforcement had, and it turned into a challenge that I accepted as an adult. Well, after high school, I went into the United States Air Force, and I was a security forces member. After I got out of the military, I went back home, got my degree in law enforcement, got on with an agency, a bigger city, and I ended up leaving there to come to a smaller agency. One of the things that I liked most about being a police officer in the city of Highland Village is that when I'm not doing traffic enforcement or answering calls for service, I have time to get into the neighborhoods and engage in community-oriented policing, really make contact with residents, build our relationships and trust that we have between each other, and to educate on potential crime of opportunity to reduce crime in our If you want to be a part of something bigger than yourself and make a difference in this community, I encourage you to apply... community, I encourage you to apply online and accept the challenge.
Is that it? That's a great video. Lori, Andrew, and Chief, that was a great, that was a great video. I hope that's something we can share out, you know, those of us on council can share out.
Mayor Wilbitch of the first part. Taylor's our new on-air talent, so you'll be seeing more videos with Taylor doing that. So I think she was a great addition to those videos.
Yeah, she did a good job.
Yeah.
So moving on to item number 10, Visitor Comments. Anyone wishing to address City Council must complete a Speaker's Request Form and return to the City Secretary. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the City Council is restricted in discussing or taking action on items not posted on the agenda. Action on your statement can only be taken at a future meeting. In order to expedite the flow of business, we can institute a three-minute time limit on a speaker. There is a 30-minute window for this, and I think we have one person that signed up to speak, Mr. Jason Raymer. Want to come up? Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Mayor, City Council, my name is Jason Raymer. I'm Vice President at Community Waste Disposal. Address is 9617 Lake Mont Drive in Dallas. So really, I just want to take a few moments today to thank you all for this five-year partnership we've had with CWD. I know it's on the agenda tonight, and you know, I was there in the workshop, and really take a moment to thank you all for that. Over the last five years, we've seen four lifetime events. We've seen a major landfill closure, first time in any of our memories, with the DFW landfill. A pandemic struck, where everybody went home, volumes went up about 15%, 20%. If things weren't bad enough, we then had an ice storm, where a trash truck didn't roll for five days in the DFW metroplex for the first time in probably anybody's memory. And then to cap it all off, about this time last year, we were seeing half-century-high inflation. All things we all had to deal with day to day, especially you all know very well, being in city management. And I'm proud to stand before you today, say not once did we cut any services. We didn't delay bulk. We didn't cancel recycling. Things may have been delayed due to volumes building up, but we fulfilled our contractual obligations, and I'm proud to say that. All the while, we've been a partner in the community, attended McAuliffe Career Day every year. We partnered with the Coloches in the park and some of those monthly events the city had, as well as the annual Hawk Fest. So we did submit a proposal, you know, and staff reviewed it, and I fully support Len's valuation and staff's recommendation. You know, our proposal was essentially the services you have today. It included a cart, but it was compressed natural gas, rear-load trucks, you know, with two trucks going down your street each day. Things we're proud of, and Republic submitted a very good bid, and I stand behind that. And really, lastly, I just wanted to assure you that you will see no lapse in service. We're here to provide best-in-class service through the end of our contract. And I say that because I want to be back in five years, be a little more wrinkles, a few more gray hairs, this little seven-month-old just gets his legs and runs around. But you know, we want to leave with honor. I think it's been an outstanding partnership. It's been an honor to work with staff, from Paul to Scott to Kimberly to Ken, you name them. They've all been fantastic. So again, just wanted to thank you all, and regardless of what happens tonight, you call me if there's any issues.
Thanks, sir. All right, moving on to Consent. All items on the consent agenda are considered for approval by a single motion and a vote without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from this agenda, so that it may be considered separately and/or adding any item from the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda items. Those items on consent include number 11, Consider Approval of Minutes of the Regular City Council Meeting Held on April 25, 2023; Receive Investment Report for Quarter Ending March 31, 2023; Receive Budget Reports for Period Ending March 31, 2023. Is there any discussion or needed for any of the items on the agenda?
Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to move item number 16 off the action agenda, which is Resolution 2023-366, Appointing Richard Lubke as the City's Representative to the Upper Trinity Regional Water District Board of Directors. Again, moving from action to consent.
Okay. Anybody?
A second.
Okay. All right, so we'll add item number 16. As Mr. Kixmiller said, 2023-3066, Appointing the City's Representative to the Upper Trinity Regional Water District, that's going to be Richard Lubke. Is there any other discussion, or would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items, approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting held on April 25, 2023, the investment report quarter ending March 31, 2023, the budget reports for March 31, 2023, and the addition of the Resolution 2023-3066, Appointing Richard Lubke, our representative in the Upper Regional Water District Board of Directors.
Got a motion, and a second for Mr. Feaster. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say nay. Motion carries. All right, moving on to Action Agenda. We did not meet in closed session, so there is nothing for number 14. Number 15 is Consider Resolution 2023-3065, Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Agreement for Solid Waste Recycling and Household Waste Collection Services. Mr. Kristen will present.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. You received a presentation in early work session with a recommendation to negotiate a contract with Public Services of Lewisville to provide the city's solid waste recycling services. Hit a couple of highlights. The proposed contract provides a 95-gallon trash cart for all residents that want it, or a continuation of 10 bags of garbage per week. Provides a 95-gallon recycle cart to be collected one time a week. Provides for collection of waste outside of the recycle cart up to three cubic yards weekly. Monday compost remains the same, yard waste collection. It provides for residential delivery of waste materials to the Camelot Landfill in Lewisville for a tipping fee. It provides provisions to continue our household hazardous waste program. And I have the proposed vendor here, as well as our consultant, and we'll take any additional questions you may have.
Does anybody have any questions? Mr. Feaster?
Yes, Mr. Kristen, I didn't ask this earlier. I apologize. Didn't come to me. But will owners or residents have to opt in or opt out of getting a new trash can?
Well, in our education campaign, which will start in July, we'll start that process, and they can either get the cart, and if they don't want the cart, they can just leave it at the curb, and it'll be recovered.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Fiorenza?
In early work session, they discussed the contract with the lift for the cans, for the 95-gallon cans. My concern now is the weight of the cans with trash in it, especially for elderly folks, people that are restrained. I want to make it clear to everyone that they have the opportunity to still use the bags if they so choose. There will be a second truck to pick up bags if they need to.
You're correct.
And leading off of his question about an opt-in, they'll have the opportunity to make that decision prior to, prior to the service beginning.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And Scott, I had a question from one of the residents a little while ago before the meeting started. If they take their new gondola or trash bin, or whatever you want to call it, and they still have their own private one, on the instances where they have more trash than normal, they will pick up both, correct? Is that correct?
Republic will service the Republic trash cans and the Republic recycle bins. Anything outside of that will be considered bulk. So if they set it out, it might disappear.
Really? So they would consider that separately than, say, bags? Or is bags considered bulk if you use your gondola as well?
Bags will be, up to 10 bags will be considered trash, and private trash carts are not going to be an option anymore.
Ah, okay. Interesting.
Anybody else? Or Mr. Heslop?
I just have one question. I think it's important that we clarify to our citizens that the trash service is going to change in the sense that you're going to get two cans, okay? And those cans will be automatically picked up through automation with their lift, whereas today, you have the truck come down the street, people stand behind the truck, and they throw it in. So we fielded the automation, and Republic has been doing this service for about 10 years successfully, with about maybe a 1% default rate on any kind of damage is what I understood. And I think this is going to be a good deal for our city, a good price point for our city, and additional service that will be provided, so.
All right. Would, anything further? Any other questions? Would anybody care to make a motion?
Just getting here, yeah.
Mr. Feaster?
I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 2023-3065, Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Agreement for Solid Waste Recycling and Household Waste Collection Services with Republic. Will that work?
All right, Mr. Feaster with a motion?
A second.
Mr. Heslop with a second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Let's see. So that moves us into late work session. Status reports on current projects and discussion of future agenda items. Did anybody have anything that they wanted on a future agenda? Mike, Tom, your last chance.
But can we rabbit hole you down while, after we leave?
DCTA contract. And speed limits.
If there is it, then I think that calls us adjourned at 7:40.